Okay, we are going to start. My name is Austin Wheelock. I'm the CEO of the County of Oswego Industrial Development Agency. I'm joined here by Nate Emmons, who's an employee of Operation Oswego County. It is 10:00 AM on Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, at the Town of Alny Town Hall for the public hearing of ASD Baldwin, New York Solar LLC. I'm going to read a little bit of the notice of the public hearing that was put out earlier this month. Notice of public hearing pursuant to New York General Municipal Law 859-A on proposed project and financial assistance. Notice was hereby given on October 9th at a public hearing pursuant to Section 859-A of the New York General Municipal Law would be held by the County of Oswego Industrial Development Agency on the 22nd day of October 2024 at 10:00 AM local time, the Town of Alny Town Hall located at 1445 County Route 6, Alny, New York, in connection with the following matter. ASD Baldwin, New York Solar LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, on behalf of itself or an entity formed or to be formed by it or on behalf, submitted an application to the agency on April 14th, 2023. As amended, the application, a copy of which is on file at the office of the agency, requested the agency consider undertaking a project consisting of the acquisition of a leasehold interest or subleasehold interest in all or a portion of an approximately 93.77 acre parcel of real property located at 1495 County Route 6 in the Town of Alny, County of Oswego, State of New York; two, the construction on the land of an approximately 35 acre solar power electric generating photovoltaic system, including but not limited to solar panels, inverters, transformers, combiner boxes, switchgear, single axis trackers, racking systems, switchboards, modules, battery energy storage system, steel beams, wiring, electric poles, and other electrical and mechanical components and access roads which make up the facility; and three, the acquisition and installation in and around the facility and/or for use in connection with a project of various machinery, equipment, furnishings, and other items of tangible personal property collectively known as the equipment. The land, the facility, and equipment are here and after collectively referred to as the project facility; and B, the granting of certain financial assistance in the form of exemptions from real property taxes, real estate transfer taxes, mortgage recording taxes, except as limited by Section 874 of the Act, and state and local sales and use taxes collectively, the financial assistance. And then C, the lease or sublease of the land and the facility by the company to the agency pursuant to a lease agreement, the acquisition by the agency of an interest in the equipment pursuant to a bill of sale from the company, and the sublease of the project facility back to the company pursuant to a sublease agreement. The company will be the initial operator of the project facility, and it's important to note that the agency has not made a decision with respect to the undertaking of the project or the granting of financial assistance at this time. The agency will, at the above stated time and place, hear all persons with views in favor or opposed to the project and/or the financial assistance. And as said before, a copy of the application, including a cost benefit analysis, is available at the office of the agency for a forward review by interested persons. I do have a copy of that cost benefit analysis here that I will read shortly, and it is available for anyone to view. The agency will be taking action on the above project at the next meeting of the County of Oswego Industrial Development Agency on Wednesday, October 23rd, at 8:30 AM at the offices of the agency at 44 West Bridge Street, Oswego, New York. This meeting is open to the public, and then it's also important to understand all public input provided at this public hearing will be read to the members of the agency at this meeting. This was dated on October 9th, 2024, that public hearing notice. So at this time, before we go into any comments about the project, I will explain a little bit more about the project. And we also have a representative of the company here, Terry Rasmussen, who can also explain and answer any questions related to the project. So as said before, the project involves the development of a five-megawatt AC solar energy production facility of approximately 35 acres to be located on an approximately 93.77 acre site in the Town of Alny at 1495 County Route 6. Before I read the rest of this, Terry, could you explain specifically where that is?
Yeah, it's literally just half a mile up the road there. It's a former topsoil mine that we're repurposing as.
So it's north of State Route 3 on County Route 6?
Yes.
Yep, it is not south of, it's not near the other existing project that is ASD Alny. So I'll go back into this then. The project site is part of a parcel which was formerly been used as a topsoil mine. Battery storage is planned to be installed at the facility. The project developer, Pure Sky Energy, which is based in Denver, Colorado, intends to purchase the project parcel. Has that already been completed or not? Not yet, okay. So it still intends to purchase the project parcel. Project cost, I'll go through right now. The project cost is 9,728,750 of equipment, 3,775,000 of site work, 3,160,000 related to interconnection with National Grid, 680,095 dollars of soft costs, 649,060 dollars of financing costs, and 450,000 dollars of land acquisition. This is a total project cost of 18,442,905 dollars. The financial assistance request for the project is the IDA's sale and leaseback transaction, which is a pilot agreement. They are requesting the IDA Solar UTEP Deviation, which is a 20-year program. Other financing sources in the project would be a mortgage on the land and other financing for the equipment. The project impact, this project addresses the New York State Clean Energy Standard by contributing to renewable energy sources. The environmental benefits include avoidance of 6,000 tons of CO2 annually, clean energy generation capacity of 5 megawatts. This is equal to 9 million kilowatt hours annually, sufficient to service 800 to 1,000 homes. Project will create 40 construction jobs. And the other thing to understand is that after the project is built, the average annual pilot payments for this facility will be 42,520 dollars. It'll be paying that over 20 years. That's the average. It's going to start at a lower number. It's going to end up at a higher number, but that is what the average is over 20 years. Current, and it's also important to understand that the current normal taxes on that facility with nothing happening there is 1,250 dollars. So the pilot payment will be roughly 37 times the current normal taxes on the facility. The other IDA assistance that is being contemplated is a $3,375 mortgage tax exemption and a $574,919 of sales tax exemption. There's no other financing assistance being provided, no direct financing or bonds or anything related to this project. So at this point, I will open it up to any comments, questions, concerns from the public.
What was the sales tax exemption?
So the, based on the, so typically in New York State, equipment, this kind of equipment would be subject to sales tax, solar equipment would, and then steel beams and everything else. The sales tax exemption would be 574,919 dollars. Now, in New York State, 4% of that goes to New York State, 4% of that goes to the county.
So we lose 250,000 dollars in bond, the county?
The county would, and it would be more than that, yeah, probably 280-ish thousand dollars of potential sales tax.
That wipes out payment of taxes.
That's true, yep.
So I might as well start.
Yep. Can you say your name for the?
Doug Hudson.
Doug Hudson, yep.
Just don't understand what benefit this does for the town. It's not providing any jobs, 40 construction jobs, and they're not local construction jobs. It's not doing anything for our taxes. That was just a wash. It does nothing for us, just makes another eyesore. This one's out of the way, but the rest of them are. And in 20 years, 25 years, when it's obsolete, which it's going to be, everybody knows it's going to be obsolete, there'll be better things along the way. We're stuck with all these solar things that are useless, and the companies have gone different ways. And, you know, it's just a waste of good farmland, not here, but all over Alny and everything else.
I will say for this project, this isn't a farmland, this is a topsoil mine, so.
Well, that's been done before, which was a huge mistake. But regardless, all over, it's not only Alny, it's all over. It's some of the best farmland in the state going to these solar farms. There's lots of roofs. There's a lot of places they can put solar. They don't need to use up all the farmland. And, you know, it's really bad that these solar farms are all coming in and just pushing their weight around.
I have a question. Did the companies ever figure out what they're going to do with these panels after they're done with?
Yeah, there are recycling facilities that will take them in, and they're increasing both the state and federal level to promote this technology. We're also posting a bond with the town that will cover the full cost of decommissioning the project at the end.
So if they're out and they're no good anymore, if it, your company?
If we disappear tomorrow, which we're not going to, we're tentative. Or I guess, once you start construction, we'll post a bond prior to that.
When we had this one built upon three, it took three years because the company changed twice.
Yeah.
So we were stuck with it from day one.
Yeah, we will post a bond before we start construction, so the town will be.
I'll clarify, the project that's on State Route 3, I think it's the corner of 6 and 3, is not a project that the IDA was involved in.
Right.
So.
Yes, so just to make sure the town is not stuck with anything, that they'll be the full cost to.
And do they know yet what it does to the soil?
Yeah, there's been lots of studies done about what happens, and these are glass encased, basic silicone panels. So there's very little stuff that could come out of them. And because they're the way they're made and the way they're encased, there's nothing that will leak out.
Terry, could you confirm that the company has negotiated a decommissioning bond with the Town of Alny?
Confirmed, yes.
Because that is a contingency of our financial assistance, is that has to be done.
I'd also like to make just two points. We are seeking domestic content here, so our plan is to buy all US-made steel and as much US-made equipment as we can, and we are required to, and happy to pay prevailing wage for all our neighbors.
Yeah, John, I was always told that when something large like this was coming into a small town, they did sign-up sheets if they were for it or against it? Or is this just going to be?
This was approved by the town planning board. And so there is opportunity for the town, lots of opportunity for the town, county, and citizens to make comments here. We'll base it.
Well, I don't think it was very well advertised, though. There's a lot of people that still don't know about it. I mean, nobody, sorry, buys bail times much anymore. So that's the only way that, you know, I work for the county, so I found out about it. There's a lot of people that don't even know about it, and they're dead set against things like this. I hear about it, and I'll start taking their names.
Yeah, what I can say right now is that the IDA can't take a position related to a project being approved by a town or not. The only thing we have in consideration for a project is financial assistance. So we can't go back and redo the planning board approvals or things like that.
And it seems like a lot of tax that are, they're not going to pay. So it just seems like we'll never make up that amount. I mean, right now, it's, but if they were to make that into a housing project, it would handle a lot of tax. I'm just saying, it would be perfect property for a land.
You need a lot of houses to get up to 41,000 dollars in property taxes per year, but.
About 20.
How much of that 42 or 41,000 dollars a year is the town going to receive?
So the town gets, the way that these work is that the payment is distributed on a pro-rata basis, based on the combined tax rate. So it's based on whatever, so if you were to take a look at what normal taxes would be, and say that, you know, say if the town is at $7 per thousand, the county is at $9 per thousand, and the school district's at $24 per thousand, you add up the combined tax rate, and then you divide it by the amount that the town's is, and you get a percentage basis for what that split would be. So that's the same way you'd do normal tax as well.
Okay, in this particular case, our town gets about 8% of the tax base. The school gets about 72%, and the county gets 12%. So it would be based on the 8%?
If that is what the current split is, and every year it changes based on, it's not based on a fixed number or based on when the project was approved. Every year, that pie can be divvied up a little bit different based on the town's percentage of the total tax rate of the total combined.
Okay, is it, for that continuum of property, is it based on assessed value of the property?
No, so the way that these, the IDA's pilot deviation works is it's based on a fixed dollar amount per megawatt with a 2% escalator per year. So it's a good question. So the way that this is calculated is, this is a five-megawatt project, so it would have $7,000 per megawatt. So in year one, the payment would be $35,000, and then it has a 2% escalator per year over 20 years, and that's where that number of the 42,250 average comes from. So it starts paying a little bit less in the first few years, and then by the end of it, it's paying. By year 20, the payment would be $50,988 over that. So then the town's percentage would be based on their pro-rata percentage of that number in each year of the pilot agreement. Saw some questions over here.
Yeah, just payment in lieu of taxes. Could you, I'm not sure just how the IDA is, you know, your involvement in this.
Sure, so in terms of IDAs across the state have the ability to provide financial assistance to projects that provide benefits to New York State as well as the communities that they go into. Solar projects have been identified by New York State as a project that is producing clean and renewable energy, and it's a project that is eligible for IDA benefits. So, you know, IDAs are involved in providing financial assistance to all types of projects, primarily manufacturing projects, but we have the ability to do benefits for both manufacturing and non-manufacturing projects if they provide a community benefit. And within that, solar falls into one of those eligible categories. So IDAs have three primary benefits that they can provide to a project, which can be part of a pilot agreement. One is the payment in lieu of tax for property tax, which is the, that's what the pilot payment they're making over 20 years. And that's an abatement. It's typically not an exemption of 100%, it's an abatement of a portion of. They can exempt sales and use tax, which is, you know, the 8%, 50% of that goes to the state, and 50% of that goes to the county. We can't make a position to say, well, we can only exempt the state portion, but keep the county portion. You can't, you know, it's like an all or nothing kind of a thing. You can't decide what percentage of that you want to do. And then the smallest portion of it is recording, mortgage recording tax. And so for any property in New York State that you do a mortgage on, there's typically a 1% mortgage tax that goes to New York State. An IDA can exempt up to three quarters of 1%, but not the whole thing. That one quarter that stays is the money that goes to Centro and helps to pay for public transportation.
So if they didn't have a pilot agreement, could the town assess that, an $18 million business? In the county, the taxes, schools, we'd all get the benefit of an $18 million business? Because that's what it is, it's a business. It has no community. It's not doing anything for our community. It's just making another eyesore.
Sure.
So there's nothing there. I could see where this even qualifies. We should assess these as businesses.
I'm not aware of, yeah, I'm not aware of a single one in New York State that's been treated that way, that the project has gone forward and built. There are other programs in New York State. There, and Terry, you know more about the particulars. So in New York State, typically, if a solar project is going to look to build in a community, they notify the community, and then they have a certain amount of time for the project to say, if they're going to go after 480, what's the?
Our ETL 487.
Yeah.
So we notify the towns that we're building a project. Effective request, sorry, Town, County, School Board, and effective request that, you know, we're building a facility. We'd like to enter into pilot agreement. So if the Town, County, and School Board have already opted out of this officially by resolution, then they have to respond within 30 days, I believe it is. Otherwise, the whole project is taxed, taxed exempt.
Yep. So New York State has created their own state program called 487 that if communities haven't opted out, the company can say, we would like to do a pilot agreement, and if they don't, they could get 15 years tax-free. Now, that, and I'm not aware where Fulton School District, the Town of Alny, and I believe Oswego County has not opted out, but I don't believe the other two. And I'm not aware. I know that the Town of Richland has opted out. I know that the Plaski School District has opted out. There's a few around the county that have, but not many. So it's, if you were to say, well, if we didn't want to do a pilot agreement, would the project be taxed at 100% of assessed value? Probably not.
I can actually clarify that. No, it would not. It is, the state last year during their by decision passed a valuation model for when someone other projects. So they have a calculator that assesses would use to calculate the taxable value of these projects. And that's the end of where it'd be very soldage when the pilot agreement is. It just, it starts out very high and drops to very low, so a year 15, it's almost nothing.
It's a different model where you're getting no money at the end of it, whereas this, you're getting more money.
Certainly a clarity, which is why it's valuable.
So we, the IDA was one of the first IDAs in the state to adopt a solar deviation policy. We actually did it in April of 2020. At the time, we did one based on $5,000 per megawatt. We were one of the first in the state. We were using nicer guidance. Earlier this year, we took a new look at that and said, hey, you know, a lot of these new deviation policies have been done since the IDA did that. Is this a number that is still, you know, where we should be? And we made the determination, determination that for any new projects, that the number would be 7,000 per megawatt. We wanted to make sure that, you know, we did a 40% increase to make sure that the taxing authorities were getting more money. I will say that an IDA is one model to do pilot agreements. The municipality also has the ability to enter into pilot agreements directly with companies. That is not something we have seen happen on a large case in Oswego County. I think maybe two projects total, maybe one actually, that's actually gone through with it. So we've developed a model, but it's not necessarily the only one that's out there. So I understand your point for sure. And unfortunately, the way the state has looked at these has said, well, this is primarily equipment that's being installed. This isn't necessarily, we're not building a building here, we're installing equipment. So should it be looked at the same way that a house is looked at? You know, it's something that has a depreciation that, you know, will, you know, be depreciated over 25 years or 35 years, whatever that is. So they are treated differently, and the state is coming out with different models that at some point may make pilot agreements for solar projects not needed or not necessary. But at this point, it's one of the, really, it's really the only way to not have a project go through that 487 and pay nothing for 15 years.
I have two questions. I'm a wonder, before you mentioned the sales tax exemption of 500,000, you gave another figure for something, and I'd like this.
Yeah, I'm going back to that. So right now, the, and it was probably the real property tax exemption. So right now, the current normal taxes on that building with nothing there is 1,250 dollars. The average pilot is 42,520 dollars. So I believe it may have just been looking at, you know, based on the, what the pilot would be paying versus what the current taxes were.
No, I was asking for you, you meant the 500,000 sales tax exemption, but you gave another figure prior to that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm looking at it. Mortgage recording tax exemption. So because they would be mortgaging the 450,000 site acquisition, we can exempt three quarters of 1% of the mortgage tax. So three quarters of 1% of mortgage tax on 450,000 would be $3,375.
Okay, I thought it was a figure prior to the 500,000 sales tax exemption. It was more than 500,000?
No, no.
I missed it, all right.
No, I only, there's, I only did the real property tax exemption, the mortgage tax exemption, and the sales tax exemption.
Okay, I missed that.
Yeah.
The second question I have is for you, Terry. What's the history of your business, and what have they done, where, and how long?
Yeah, so our company was originally Ampenogia, Toronto. It's been in business since 2009. A little over a year and a half ago, the US assets and divisions were sold and reformed as an American company out of Denver. So we've been operating community solar projects, which is one of those, since 2017, starting in Minnesota. We are a developer owner operator, so we're a long-term holder of these projects. So we have approximately 15 projects in operation in New York State, and we are building five more right now. All of them are performing well, and ready. We are also, excuse me, we're also developing projects and building projects in Illinois right now. We have operational ones in Massachusetts, and we're developing ones in Pennsylvania, Colorado, Michigan, California. And we're a long-term holder of these projects. And we actually have the one just down on, further down Southern.
Oh, you do?
That's on that school. So we're here.
Question, just for you, you're saying you're using all US, like steel and stuff. Where are the solar panels made?
The solar panels that we, for this project, we're procuring domestic content ones. So they will be, the panels themselves will be, and the frames and glass, I believe the glass, I'm not sure, will be made in the US. Right now, there are not enough cell suppliers yet, not operational. But that will increase in the next couple of years, and hopefully in a couple of years will be fully US.
You didn't answer where they're being made now.
I think they're being assembled in the US. The solar base solar cell right now, I don't know, could they have picked the actual supplier? But most of those right now are made in Asia. No, most Chinese ones aren't because they have, there's a forced labor issue with their cell plant, so those have been shut.
Are you planning on hiring any local people?
We hire local subcontractors to do the labor in that. So where they source their labor from, it has to be prevailing wage, and usually is within the region, so it's too hard to recruit people for these projects.
How are you advertising that?
That would be through our subcontractors.
Okay, so have you reached out to the town to find out if there's contractors willing to do that locally? So at least some of the money stays here local?
Right now, we're in the process of getting bids for it. So we don't know who's going to be the subcontractor. But we're having to talk to the town about that.
Okay, I think that's very important, that some of the people that live in this town have an opportunity to earn some money, you know.
We've had discussions with local IBEW. He's been very interested to do the installations of these projects. And so if it's a prevailing wage project, they'd probably be very competitive in terms of a bid for that, so.
Did you send out a public request for bids?
There's no, to my knowledge, there's been no bids made yet. The financial assistance hasn't even been approved.
We're working on a procurement plan right now and selecting contractors.
How soon we should start to build this project?
We'd like to get in probably by December to start sending the site work, and then it would be spring before, I think probably spring before we get into the bulk of the work and the operational management.
Okay, some of this solar farm is not visible from the road, I guess.
I don't think any of it is.
Okay, how are you going to access that property?
So there is an existing driveway right now, so we're.
Is it on 6 or 7?
It is on 6.
Okay.
So we'll be reinforcing that existing driveway and existing entrance.
Terry, could you go back again? You were talking about you're looking to start doing bids. So is there still the opportunity for local contractors, union contractors, to bid on that? I mean, how would that work? Would it be through you directly, or would it be through your contractor?
We contract, EPC contracts, so in June, June construction. Once we've selected them, then they will decide on the subcontractors. Generally, it is someone within the broader region. But once that's been done.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure because I'm not familiar with all the stuff with that pilot. But you said forty-two thousand.
Yeah, so it starts the year one, so after the project would be built. So this project, you know, even if it were to start today, the pilot wouldn't start until the year twenty twenty-six because we've already into the twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. So it wouldn't actually start till the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, twenty twenty-six town and county. The first year of that pilot would be at thirty-five thousand dollars. And then the year twenty would be at fifty thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So the average over that is forty-two thousand and as I said, forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty. And as I said, the, the towns portion would be, you know, the, whatever percentage the towns tax rate is to the combined of the school, county and town together. So I'm, I'm looking at a combined tax rate of about forty dollars per thousand is the school, county and town together. And what is the towns portion of that? Do you know? I'm looking at the towns is.
I know we're, we're, last year we were like eight percent of the total.
Eight percent, okay. So the towns tax rate's like under four dollars per thousand? It would have to be under four dollars per thousand for that to be.
Yeah.
Maybe a dumb question, but in twenty years, fifty thousand dollars is going to be worth fifty thousand dollars. Can, can you tie into that inflation rate?
It's not currently built into any IDA model for a solar project. We have done projects in the past where, for different projects where it was tied to COLA, which is the cost of living adjustment number. But we've never, it's, it's not currently in our policy and we'd be deviating from our policy to do that for a, you know, it could be considered. I, I would think for, if we were to redo our deviation policy to look at that. But it, it's a, it, it could be done. It could be looked at.
At least it would make it, you know, you're getting this, seeing amount every year now.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, from the, from the developers' perspective, they also like to know for their financing, hey, this is what the number is this year. This is the, you know, so they know their financing works. If you, you have some, if you introduce another variable like that, it, it, you, you can't really, you can't really project your financing, but.
We can't project ours with our taxes either.
Understood.
They have, they have a lot more people to project stuff.
Sure. So I think it's something that could be considered, but.
I, I would like to see something like that in all kinds of projects like this. Because they're the ones making the huge dollars, we're just paying for them. Whether it's taxes, local taxes, state taxes, you know, it's not a county, it's the state of New York's just as bad.
I have a question about the land use of this property, which is now a topsoil scraping line. Now, is that topsoil about to be gone? So it's just going to sit there? Is this open, dirty dirt space or, I mean, I, I don't know about, I'm just wondering about the use of land over the next twenty years in contrast to putting solar farm.
Yeah, Terry, can you explain?
Yeah, right now, roughly about, I think just over half the site has been stripped with topsoil. Operations are, are ceased on that. So it's basically, it's a big open flat area, a couple of ridges where they haven't dug down yet. Covered basements, scrubbed grass and vegetation. So it's not going to, it's not going to be usable for agricultural regardless. However, what we are doing as part of our project and part of what we committed to doing is within the, within the panel area, we will be receiving it with either pollinators species or, or special blends for wetland vegetation in areas that are wetter than others. And we will have to amend the solar bit in the beginning to get that going. So we'll be adding a little bit of some, some per light to get that going in over twenty years effectively. It's going on, no, sorry, the per light is twenty-four, twenty-five years. So what we like to, it will be two or three times a year and effectively the land will, will follow, follow, like follow and regenerate solar for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years.
So there is wetland though, did it?
There are, we, we have, we have discussed, some of it has grown wet after they've done the work. We've been through a very rigorous program, process with the New York State Urban Forestry Conservation. And given their approval of that, it is better than what it was. So within the areas that are wet, we will be receiving a wetland vegetation. So it will effectively be better than it was before.
So the other sixty acres where you put the topsoil off will never be used again?
Not for, it won't be very useful for agricultural. The area that we're, you know, telling the solar grid, once that's all there removed, it will have been left for how for twenty-five plus years. So there, there may be some use in that.
And I'll also, so the other thing that the IDA does when they do a pilot agreement is that the pilot only affects what's called the, the property within the fence. So within where the solar panels are is where the, where the pilot would be. Any additional property would still be taxed as normal. So that, you know, if sixty acres are left as, you know, vacant land that is there, that'll still be collecting normal tax. They'll be getting, they'll be paying a separate normal tax bill to the taxing authorities based on that property. So it's, pilot is only specific to the, the, the project itself, which is the thirty-five, thirty-five acres.
Now, is this going to be where it's centered? That there's going to be property around it that could be sold? Because some of them may put a rate on some of those.
We could conceivably carve out the areas or the lots, but it's hard to do because there's only one small access road. So we couldn't really sever the lots that way.
So in other words, that'll just be open?
Yeah.
Question for the supervisor. So when they put a solar block next to your house and you're appraised at three hundred thousand dollars or whatever, how much are we going to get our assessments dropped? Because now our property value has just dropped because now we have a solar farm, an unsightly solar farm in my opinion. There's never been a good-looking solar farm. It's not his, I'm not saying anybody else's, but it could be the one up the road. How much is it going to affect the houses around and their assessments? Because again, if you don't have one next door, you know, it's costing landlords, you know, property values.
Our assessor is right here. I don't know if she can answer that or not.
Okay.
According to New York State, they say that there is no detrimental influence on property values when there's a solar farm next to it. I personally disagree with that statement. And right now, we're at fifty-nine percent of a hundred percent of value. So you're going to be looking at some reassessments coming in the next couple of years. Because obviously the state wants us at a hundred percent and they encourage that. You have to, they really encourage it every four years and now we're on seven years. It would have been reassessed in seven years. And as you know, the property values have gone up substantially. You know, some of that's due to lack of inventory. You know, people aren't selling their houses because the interest rates are higher. And so the property values, I had a property that is assessed for two hundred thousand and just sold for four hundred thousand. So, you know, I mean, there's a lot of that going on. As far as when we do the reassessment in a couple of years, next year or the year after, I'm hoping, then I'll take that into consideration. But it doesn't mean that the property, your property taxes aren't going to go up because all the assessments are very low right now.
Well, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of being a hundred percent because it's affecting your star ratings and everything else.
It affects everything.
And I understand assessments very much.
Well, as a matter of fact, the start assumption, particularly for elderly people, when I started here was sixty-five thousand off the assessed value. We're down to fifty-four thousand, which is, you know, a big deal for a lot of people that live in a small, limited. So I will take that into consideration.
We'd like to point out, there have been multiple studies done across in different areas in New York looking specifically at this value. And they have not seen any long-term decrease in value surrounding all those that the state has. I have been writing the actual studies that have been done by independent companies in New York State.
Any other comments related to the project?
I'm just wondering about the company again. Is it, what do you call it?
We are a private, we are a private company that is owned, it's a joint venture between two investment funds, Fear Capital and Palisades Infrastructure. Both are, are long-term companies that have been in business there whose goal is to own and operate long-term assets.
And they're out of Colorado?
Our, our company, Pure Sky Energy, is head office in, out of Colorado. Fear is based out of Toronto and Palisades is based out of Australia. We're looking at New York offices.
Do you have any other projects in Valney?
Yeah, we have one just down.
No, that you're working on for the future?
No, no, Valney's, the grid is, grid is effectively full here. There's maybe one small project that could be squeezed in. Beyond that, there's, there's no more of that massive, massive upgrades that we're doing.
That's, that's, that's going to come within our grid that we have or do they have to put in another grid to handle that much?
No more grid, but what some of the money we're paying to now square they're doing is they're making some upgrades in the substation to make it more reliable, as well as replacing some of the old poles along the road here, some of them are in pretty bad shape down, down here. Reprolocational, I'd say so. So they'll be enhancing the reliability that way.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around all of this, but if you're throwing percentages out and this, you know, it's one percent of this percent or whatever, what's the dollar amount of the exemption that you're looking for? The actual dollar?
Sure, yeah, no, I can give you that. Yep, so if this project, and like I said, the projects are, there, there's not one that I am aware of that pays full tax if you were to fully assess these projects. If you were to take this project, we would, our, because we have to, we have to create an estimate to be able to determine an actual value of, of an exemption. Our, our estimate based on the size of the project would be that the assessed value of the property, if it were to be treated normally, would be about four million, three hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-five at the end of, at the end. Because, you know, a lot of the costs that they're doing is interconnect costs. That's not on the site, that's to, you know, for, to the, to the grid and, and soft costs and other things. So at the end of the day, that, you know, our estimate would be that. That's not the same as the assessor, we're, we're, we're not, you know, doing that. But we're, you know, we look at other projects that have been done and how they're assessed at the end of the day to kind of help us to come to our numbers. And so based on that, that number of assessed value and based on the combined tax rate currently in twenty twenty-four, the normal tax on a project for this would be a hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
So basically, that's the assumption you're kind of looking?
On a yearly basis, yeah, so I mean, the.
And you're going to give us forty-two thousand?
Forty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars at an average. So it would start at thirty-five thousand and then go up two percent per year and escalate over twenty years and then at five, fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight.
So is that, so am I thinking of this right, that we're pretty much handing over like sixty-something, like we're losing?
Well, if they don't do a project, you're not losing anything, but.
If what?
I said, if you're not doing a project, you're not losing anything. But if you're, if you're building a project.
Are we?
Well, right now, it's paying one. Yeah, so, no, it's a good question. Right now, the property as doing nothing is paying one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars per year in taxes. With this built project, they'll be paying an average of forty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty. So it'll be, you know, over the average of it, be paying a little over forty thousand dollars more in taxes than it currently is paying. You're talking about if the project is built, what it would be normal tax versus if there was a pilot.
Well, like if somebody said, if somebody, if a developer came home and the house is there, then we have, we're losing that opportunity for revenue there. So.
I'd also assume someone's going to, that, that they could do that under the existing laws as well.
What's that?
So that's, that's an assumption though, right? There's lots of uses that could be done on the land.
Sure.
But, you know, there's no way stepping up to do it.
Right.
And we're not, I don't know both the housing laws, I don't know if you could put it in a subdivision or whether it's part of the circle.
I don't believe the property is served by sewer. It's, it would have to be all private septic, which could be done. We want to try to get it out there eventually. It's, you know, it's down by the airport. Down the road.
I, I have one other thought and that is after this twenty years of the forty-two thousand dollar average, all I remember is Miller's. And after twenty years, somehow some of those benefits that they got were gone and Miller's was gone very quick.
You know, I, yeah.
That's the great unknown, but it's.
It is, and, and I can say I wasn't here, that happened in nineteen ninety-five, so I was pretty young when that happened. But I don't believe they were tied together. I don't believe because of the benefits running out that Miller left. I believe that Miller sort of lost a, a beer war with, with Anheuser-Busch and, and people chose Bud Light over Miller Lite. And when they said they were overbuilt and.
It was ironic how.
Yeah, no, it, it was coincidental, I will say that. I mean, you know, the timing was coincidental, but I don't believe that was the, you know, that was the thing that did it, so.
On the other hand, I guess this is, you know, this is something that we're gearing towards as a culture, as an economy, I suppose. So maybe I shouldn't be so fussed about that. I am thinking about this twenty years and what.
At, at the end of twenty years, we're assessing the value.
I understand.
At that point, it'll be lower than seven thousand. So the, the end of the deal will cause us to leave in fact, it'll be, it'll be a net benefit to us at that point.
Promise.
Yep. You know, twenty-five years from now.
One thing I want to add is that these projects in New York State have really ramped up over the last five years. So we haven't really seen what happens at the end of life of these. We haven't seen if somebody were to come back and say, hey, this is a good thing, we want to buy new panels, you know, do it again, start the thing program over again and do that. We just, it hasn't been around long enough to see that happen. I can say with other projects that the ID has been involved with manufacturers and others, it, you know, it's used as sort of a, a way to try to keep the company to keep reinvesting and creating new jobs and that. It's a different kind of project, but, you know, it, we'll see what happens. I mean, like I said, right now, the state's developing new assessment rules for solar projects. So we may not see projects come to us for pilots in the, in the near future because there's a better program out there for them and there's, you know, we don't have to do this. But as of right now, we still, still are.
Yeah, at the end of twenty-five years, we're still going to be generating at least eighty percent on the same electricity with everything effectively paid off. To lower value and, and, and keep it going. If I'm still, if I'm still around, then I.
Is, is the value of the electricity generated like in Valney or in Swallow County? Where does that, is it just going to the grid and we get no benefit?
So, no, there's actually, and I, you know, it, it wasn't described here because we don't know what the actual benefit is to every, you know, single rate payer or, or utility payer. But that power that is generated within the national grid territory is then available for the residents of the national grid territory to buy at a, at a reduced rate. Now, what that looks like, I don't know, but it's, the power generated within the territory then stays within the territory for, for rate, for the rate payers.
Because we keep getting a thing in the mail, save ten percent by using Next Ant, which is supposedly solar powered. I was just curious.
This, this is a community solar project, so the, the power that is generated by the project is, stays within the community. And when they say community, they mean the greater community of the national grid territory, which is sort of the regional area, you know, the greater Syracuse region. But, you know, that is, that power that is generated and the more power that is then generated means there's more power available for people to buy. As I said before, eight hundred to a thousand, was it eight hundred to a thousand or? Eight hundred to a thousand homes could be powered by this, which, you know, means then, you know, that eight hundred to a thousand homes could be buying lower cost power. But it's not something that we offer through our entity. I don't believe you guys do it directly, it's done through national grid.
Oh, we do have, our website, we do take subscribers. We do have lots of projects in New York that require subscribers. Our, our standard residential rate is a ten percent rate. And because New York has combined billing, rather than us sending you a bill and National Grid sending you a bill, it just comes off your National Grid bill. So we do take subscribers, businesses, small businesses, resident, residents, residents. So there's, there's, there's that perspective where, where the use of charge ends up with a ten percent off your electricity charges. From a physical perspective, because we are connected to the distribution grid, everything gets consumed locally until there's not enough local demand. And then it will go up and click, you know, go up into the grid to offset some demand elsewhere.
Does this need new power lines?
There would, the, National Grid is going to be upgrading the power lines along here. So this, this will take advantage of that.
Does that improve it for everybody else who's along that line?
It will, yes, it'll provide extra resiliency plus, you know, there's a lot of old poles and wires down there, driven down there. So we'll replace some of those and help enhance the viability of that section.
As long as we don't lose a lot of people to go into micro.
Sorry?
To micro.
Was that the chip factory?
Exactly, yeah.
So this meeting isn't about building the, it's not here, but it's not seeking permission about building it, seeking.
They've already gotten, I mean, they already have a building permit, yeah.
So this is specifically whether or not you will get the. So this is specifically whether or not you will get the exemption.
Correct, this is, yes.
The small group is supposed to be approving that, like that's.
No, you guys provide input and then the I D A will vote on this and will take everybody's comments. I'm going to have a long, long minutes from this.
There's the I D A.
The I D A, the Congress.
It's at the October twenty-third.
That's the meeting tomorrow that's being held in Oswego at forty-four West Bridge Street.
So you're just taking our questions back to them?
Yes, and, and we also have already received from the different taxing authorities, Fulton School District has already provided comments, um, you know, and, and so we're just trying to get everybody's comments from the local level, from the, from the different entities and, and incorporate that into the decision-making process.
So what happens if it doesn't get approved? You build and proceed without your, the tax exemption?
Well, if the, hypothetically, if the I D A board was to say, we do not support this for the project, then they're probably going to go and do, they're going to go back to New York State and say, we tried to get a pilot agreement, they ultimately said no, we would now like your four-eight-seven program, which means we pay nothing for fifteen years.
Is there negoti, is there room for negotiation on the pilot agreement, that forty-two thousand? Is that?
I mean, this is a, so we've created a, a policy that, to treat all projects the same. So if a company comes to Oswego County, they know what they're dealing with. So it's not like, well, this project that we did here is eight thousand, this project we did here is six thousand, and we just have no idea. We tried to create a level playing field across Oswego County. So if a project lands in Sandy Creek, or if it goes in Volney, or goes to Hannibal, or wherever, they know what they're, they're, they're working with.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the developer, the developer, so if a dev.
You're the developer.
No, I'm not the developer, he's the developer. We're, we're the I D A, we're the.
You're the I D A.
Yeah, we're, we're an entity, yeah, and I want to make sure, make that clear. We are, um, with the way that we are set up in New York State, we have the ability to provide benefits to an eligible project. This project has been determined to be eligible. The next step is to then say, what is the, what is the value of those benefits? And, you know, do we, do we approve all benefits being requested and, you know, and go from there. So there is the potential that it could be changed, um, but it's also setting a precedent when you have a policy saying that this is what it is, that you're then, in essence, changing your policy. So, so it's, it's, it's something that could be done. Um, you know, and I'll, there's other communities that have, um, you know, one of the things that has been done in other communities is they've requested shorter pilots, um, you know, but.
You know, do you know why this one is twenty years? Because I think, I thought I read there, I just, like, read, just to quickly, try to hurry up and learn something.
That's what the I D A's policy is. Yeah, the I D A set the policy, when we created, when we renewed our policy earlier this year, it used to be five thousand dollars per megawatt with a two percent escalator over twenty years. Um, we, we looked at what other, uh, counties and communities across the state were doing and we decided that the twenty-year number was sort of right in the range. There's some communities that have fifteen, there's some communities that have twenty-five, there's a lot that do twenty. We said, you know, we think that twenty's kind of right in the middle, it's a, it's a fair versus where other places are. But what we did do is we increased it to seven thousand per megawatt because we saw that other communities were more aligned with that number, um, since we had originally created our policy in twenty twenty. So, um, yeah, no, we've, our policy is twenty years of seven thousand per megawatt to start with a two percent escalator. Uh, we also require there to be a solar decommissioning, uh, plan in place with the town. We, we require all local approvals to be done with the town. Um, and, you know, that's sort of, and, and these guys, um, their project actually came, first came to the I D A last year before we had that new policy in place, but we were holding them to that policy even though it started the process before that, so.
After twenty years, right?
So after twenty years, the project comes off the pilot agreement and whatever the assessed value of that project is will be treated the way that New York State treats a solar project, so. And we just don't know what that's going to be because things change. I mean, maybe they, they go back and say, no, well, we'll treat it like normal, whatever, but I don't think that's the way the state's moving on this.
They're worried about it.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I mean, it, it's one of these where the state really supports solar, so they've created a very attractive program. And the only way that companies don't go directly to that program is because they've also required them to go and talk to communities about the pilot first. And if they go for the pilot, they do that. If the, if the communities don't work with them on a pilot, they go to the four-eight-seven, unless they opted out. I want to make it clear, that's a, you know, communities can opt out of that program. And I'm not going to say to do it or not do it, but it's something the community should look at and determine, is that something that they want to do? Any other questions or comments, Terry, anything? No, okay. Okay, it is, uh, ten fifty-nine, we will officially close the public hearing at ten fifty-nine.
Thank you for coming.